Welcome to our second meeting of month for March. Soon, March will be over, right? In like a lion, out like a lamb, hopefully. All right, I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Legions, which is behind the monitor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First on the agenda, budget amendments and transfers.
Okay, I have just a couple, um, a couple budget amendments and transfers. The first two were unforeseen. One, for the streets department, we will be taking those from the New York class balances, and one is for 15,458, and this is for the plow for the 2021 Ram 5,500. Second one is for 13,427, for the plow for the 22 Ram 3,500. Both of these were from 2021, and we just got notified that we owed it and that it wasn't paid just last week.
We just got invoiced.
Correct.
From 2021?
Yeah. So, a little bit backup on that. That was during COVID.
And we received them.
They, no. We, oh, we have the equipment. Everything's done. They didn't invoice, so let me finish. 2021, COVID, they reduced staff, they were only working part-time. All of this got kind of shelved into the ether, right? And they're now cleaning up everything that they're still going through, and they found these two bills, and they apologized because they had never invoiced them to us. They have now invoiced it to them. We owe the money, so.
Right, so in 2021, we budgeted for them.
Right, with the trucks.
Right, and so, because we didn't spend the money in 2021, that money flowed to fund balance, so now we're pulling it back out of fund balance.
Correct.
Okay. Wow.
I make a motion to approve.
Wait, I just have two more, and then I'll do them all at once. Fire Department Equipment EMS is taken from their own capital fire for 18,024. This is the third payment to Striker for the stretchers, for the ambulance. The Fire Department apron for 152,600. I just haven't physically done it. The board approved it prior, and we've done the work, and the driveway's there. So, those are the four I just need approval of.
But the 100,000 came out of the fire capital count, right?
It is, right.
Yeah, okay, right now. All right. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
And then I just have one more, just so that you know, Chrissy prepared some prepaid, so they're downstairs if you get a chance to go and sign those vouchers. In the general fund, bond payments totaling 63,897.96. Escrow returned in the amount of 2,889.89. A water transfer for a bond, 35,566.18. And utility payments in the waterfront, 13,336.09. And $727.23 for sewer, for prepaid.
You don't need to do it, because we sign them, right?
Well, you do, but this way I don't have.
I make, make motion to approve.
These are the vouchers, right?
Vouchers.
We have the money in line items for all of these?
Right, yeah.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Part of this, then, is the, Karen and I have been talking about our capital counts, which we have several capital accounts for the street, sidewalk, parking, police, and fire. So, I'd like to propose a resolution, whereas the village has maintained capital reserves in accounts for street, sidewalk, parking, police, and fire, whereas several of these accounts are used together on projects that involve complete street work and/or parks, I should have put in there. Whereas, it is appropriate to consider combining the streets, the parking, and the sidewalks into one capital account, all to be called Streets. Whereas, all capital reserve accounts would benefit from the investment into Ni-class to get interest income, and whereas, it is recommended to transfer the capital accounts to individual accounts in Ni-class. So, therefore, be resolved, the League Board, effective March 25th, will combine the streets, sidewalks, and parking into one account called Streets.
Second.
Discussion?
Is the parking account the account that receives money from developers when they build, if they don't have enough parking spaces?
Yes.
The parking account, parking, yeah.
But.
We haven't done it in 10 years.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing's come in.
Nothing's coming into that account.
Yeah, no one's, no one's sort of negotiated that one in my tenure on the, on witnessing planning board meetings.
Right. And we have any covenants on what's supposed to be done with that one?
Right, and it's been a little unclear.
There's still not covenants here.
Yeah. We need to clean that up as far as the zoning code stuff, which is working. How much money is in it?
Geez, I didn't bring that amount with me.
Five figures.
Do you know how much money is in?
Yeah.
Um, off the top of your head.
It's not more than five figures.
Only like 20,000 and 15,000, because we took some out of it at the beginning of the year for, for some projects.
We used it to pay for the, like, the painting and the work that was done on the municipal lot, all of the hoopla around the ADA parking spots.
Should this resolution include what the account should be used for in general?
Well, it's called Streets.
Right.
Which is what it was now.
Right, right, but I mean, is there something that's to, this is to be used for street maintenance, maintenance of municipal parking lots, maintenance of?
If you want to make it a reserve account, especially for specific items, then yes.
Well, can we do something less than that and say this is our intention to use it for this? Or is that just not a good practice?
I think we should either keep it the way it is, or we should actually create an actual reserve account.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, I would argue at a later date, because I think right now, we're just trying to take advantage of the investment.
And just kind of house them somewhere, and do the board's kind of consolidation until you establish.
Right.
How you want your reserves to be.
I do think that we need to have a bigger conversation around the reserves.
Eventually, yes.
Definitely.
But this is now, a step to.
Get there.
How we've been using them is together anyways.
Right, right.
And let's get some interest.
No, I understand the utility.
Right. All right.
So, this would just move Streets, Police, and Fire to New York class, but?
No, we were gonna move combined.
It was, well, we combined.
Combining those.
New Streets and Police and Fire to New York class, but we also have a capital reserve for highway, we have a capital reserve for, this isn't all the capital reserves, is it?
This is the one you're combining, the sidewalk.
Right, this is the capital reserve account.
These are the capital reserve accounts.
These are all of our capital reserve accounts now.
Correct.
So, we just went from five to three.
Five to three.
Okay. Great. Okay, perfect. No more questions?
So, it's just Streets, Fire, and Police, correct? The parking and parks are going into Streets, okay.
Do we have a Parks reserve account?
We have a parking and a parks.
Yeah.
Are they all going into the Streets?
Okay, so Parks is also going into Streets.
Oh, but did?
No, not just parking, not Parks.
Not Parks.
So, we?
So, we have four.
Yeah, I left Parks off here.
Okay.
Parks should be moved to New York class as well.
Yes, okay.
Now amend it to say, Street, Police, Fire, and Parks.
And Parks.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going from six accounts down to four.
Correct.
And, okay, and moving all of them to a better investment vehicle.
Right.
And we'll leave, and then the board can discuss their reserve needs, and then we'll do that.
Makes it easier whether you want to move.
No, I think it makes sense.
Because simplify, simplify.
And the complete Streets, I think it's appropriate, so.
Can I have a second on the amendment?
He did.
No, no, on the amendment.
Oh, on the, on the, there you go, on the amended.
Okay.
All right. Can we call it, can we call it Complete Streets?
You can call it whatever you want to call it.
Say it again? I'd like to call it Complete Streets, because that's the purpose of it.
Yeah, although, but they have to go to pay for some parking lots, too.
That's okay, that's part of Complete Streets.
I really don't care.
Yeah.
I know you don't.
I think it sounds cool.
I think it sounds cool. It also reflects the comprehensive plan, also, it's like, it gives a reason as to why we're combining sidewalks into Streets when people think about combining sidewalks.
Under that statement.
Under that statement.
Complete Streets, right?
Complete Streets. A reserve account, but a complete Streets.
It kind of clarifies that it's not just like.
Right, it's things up and down in our rabbit.
Yeah, because we've used it for drainage, we've used it for everything.
Yeah, which is all totally for Rick.
All right, before anybody else starts changing it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next. I just received a copy of the, did I bring it up with me? Yes, I did. The Town of Rhinebeck Protective District. This is an amendment to our existing contract that was in October 16, 2024, which, I'm just gonna summarize this, because you've all been through it. This, actually, the Town of Rhinebeck has worked with the Hillside Fire Department to transfer the Hillside, well, the Hillside was covering of the Town Protective District to the Village of Rhinebeck to be covered, for a total cost of $51,810 per year, but we're gonna proderate it for this year, for three quarters of the year, making this effective April 1, 2025, for a total amount of $41,107 for the year 2025, and with an option to extend the contract one more year into 2026, but that will be evaluated at the end of this calendar year. Okay? Town Board has approved and has signed the contract. I make a motion to approve the amendment to our Village of Rhinebeck Fire Contract, 2526, to include the Protective District.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Is, is Hillside actually relinquishing the Protective District?
They have already, because the town has signed it.
Okay.
It's in the town's authority to do that.
Okay, all right.
It's not, it's in the town's authority to do that.
So, I was at the meeting last night, at the town meeting, and there was lots of back and forth on this, it seemed to be very, you know, I don't know, very influx, but my question was that, that the comprehensive plan, when we met, we were very concerned about volunteerism and that sort of thing, and I think it even says possibly in the plan that, that, you know, eventually, maybe we will need to have some paid fire, you know, fighters, and so I just want to make sure that, I mean, I just applaud that Rhinebeck's stepping up, I mean, you know, kudos to them. I just don't want to make it, you know, really overwhelming, or, you know, are we, are we asking too much?
Good questions, Eleanor. This is something that we have been under contact, under discussions with the Fire Department since this started a while ago, right? So, number one, the Fire Department is on board, you know, with manpower and equipment to be able to do this. Number two, we are already doing it today, and have been doing it for most, for all the alarms in the Hillside District. Number three, we have 10 to 12 members who live in this Protective District already, who are there to be able to service. So, given those three components, given that we were doing it and not getting paid for it, now we're getting paid for it for doing the service we've been providing.
So, by doing it and not getting paid for it, I just want to clarify for, you know, the TV cameras. Our Fire Department, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but all of the Fire Departments in the area have mutual aid agreements with all the other Fire Departments in the area, and every time there's been a call, not every time, most times that there's been a call that goes out in the Hillside Protective District, Rhinebeck Fire Department is called in anyway under mutual aid. Not under mutual aid?
I want to correct that a little bit, and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but we sign up for how, what calls we will respond to. It's not an automatic that just because it goes off in Hillside, we go. It's because we commit ourselves.
Right.
To be on a mutual aid call.
Right.
For structured fires, car accidents, et cetera.
Right.
We can also remove ourselves from those if we're not part of it, if we are not being able to do it. Like, a while back, we removed ourselves from EMS calls.
Okay.
And said, we were at the point where we were overwhelmed, till we got through some issues to be able to do that.
And then we added ourselves back in.
And then we're back in.
Right.
So, we do it by choice, not by automatic, that's what I want to ensure.
Okay, got it. So, we have been choosing to help the Hillside Protective District for X number of months slash years, and now we are just going to be paid for it?
Now, we're, yes.
And?
And we are now, we are doing it.
And now we'll be obligated, now we must, instead of choose.
We are doing it now.
Right.
We are the first response.
Right.
For this district now.
And who's the, who would be the mutual aid for us?
Probably Hyde Park, would I would imagine.
So, I just want to clarify a couple things.
Yes, please, please. We're like the definitely.
New York State has a mutual aid agreement throughout the state and with other states that all departments help each other. So, if we need help because of a fire, we have multiple calls in the district, we can call mutual aid. The county has the ability to call neighboring departments to come in to cover. What's been happening over the last year, year and a half, is manpower's issues were down, we've stepped up to assist them and cover a gap while they were trying to get things together. We've been responding down there on a regular basis to assist them, we have not been getting paid for it. This was just a, an agreement that we had to help out so that they could get back on their feet. That's where it is. It's not underneath a mutual aid agreement, it's just helping, trying to help them, you know, cover the citizens and provide the best coverage that we can. Doing this, we will be able to get paid for what we do on a regular basis. The ambulance coverage, there's always been a gentleman's agreement that we would have down there, that we would be able to run the ambulance back down there, because they don't have an ambulance. We have our own people that we need to serve up here, we weren't getting paid for it. This contract will include the ambulance service down here, so it's a benefit for those taxpayers also. So, it's, it's kind of a multiple lines of, of issues.
And all of the equipment is still gonna run out of this building?
Correct.
Okay.
We are the, now the provider for services for the Protective District.
Right.
Very clear. Hillside District still exists.
Right, and they're still responsible.
And is functioning.
And has additional responsibilities.
And they're responsible for their area, which is a tax for and maintain and do that.
Okay.
We are not.
So, if we need a hand south, who comes up? Does Hyde Park show up? Who, who helps?
So, under the chief and I talked last night.
Yeah.
We plan on still doing the same thing.
Okay.
We'll assist them to their needs, they'll assist us to our needs on a regular basis.
Okay, but the next closest Fire Department to us, to the Hillside area, is, is Hyde Park?
Well, it could be West Clinton on this side, it could be Roosevelt.
Okay.
It's, it's the county that dispatches them, right? You call in mutual aid to the county, and then they dispatch the, they put out the call, right? You don't call them?
Most times, yes.
It's the Roosevelt Fire Districts, that's what it's called?
Well, it could be Roosevelt Fire District, it could be West Clinton.
But it's not like Hyde Park Fire District, it's the Roosevelt Fire District.
There is a Hyde Park Fire District, but.
Oh, okay, but that's where they're from.
It would be Roosevelt, then Hyde Park.
Got it.
There's the Hillside Fire District, Rhine Cliff.
Got it.
There's, there's multiple districts around that we, you know, we can draw from.
Okay.
So, will they have the ability to overcome that, I mean, I don't know how big a chunk that money is out of their budget, because I don't know how big their budget is.
That's not for me to.
No, I get it, and I understand, but I mean, and it isn't necessarily our concern, but in a way it is, because they are our neighbors, and I just hate to see a Fire Department go out of business.
The Hillside Fire District still exists, and still taxes our residents for the support of the Hillside District.
No, I get that, I just didn't know if they could overcome that, you know, that loss of funds.
Can't answer that question.
We'll see. I think at the moment, it's not the funds that's an issue, it's the volunteers.
So, at the moment, right now, is worrying about the taxpayers in the community. We're gonna be here for whichever taxpayer needs it, whether it be our district, somebody else's district, we're here for them. We will continue to work with Hillside to make sure that they have what they need and assist them in any way we can.
No, I totally, you know, I completely appreciate that. I just, I understand, but I used to live out in the boondocks, so I know the idea that if I were burned caught on fire.
Ever since.
Then it'd be gone, I mean, there would be no way, you know what I mean? So, I, I understand that people would be concerned about having, you know, a Fire Department nearby, and I appreciate that.
And this is kudos to our Fire Department. We've worked really closely together the last couple months, did the work on this agreement, and so, it's a cooperative effort. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mary and Brian.
Do you need to add the rest of this?
Thank you.
Rick, you're up. Do NIPA contract?
Sure. So, what we have in front of us is an amendment to a contract that has expired. Basically, when we purchased the streetlights from Central Hudson, it was under a program with NIPA, and the overall goal was, we would own the streetlights, we would pay Central Hudson for the electricity, and NIPA was gonna create a maintenance contract that covers, basically, this general area, and we would save a fair amount of money, because Central Hudson charges us, charged us a lot for maintenance. So, this is an amendment to the, to the contract that just expired. It's written in a kind of weird way. You'll see there's something called annual, routine maintenance annual cost and nonroutine maintenance budget. They write this document from the point of view of what should the village budget, which we can disagree with.
Hopeful?
Right.
Sort of.
Sort of. The easiest way to think about it is the $6,900 we're paying to NIPA is essentially a warranty on our streetlight system. So, if anything goes wrong, they dispatch somebody up here that's any kind of fault, any kind of breakdown, they're warranting their equipment, basically, and if it's one or if it's every one of them, the $6,900 covers that, that situation. What's not covered is if we say, hey, we want to move a streetlight from one place to another, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not a warranty repair.
Yeah.
And that would be on us, nor are accident-related repairs. They're securing the site, which would be a warranty repair, and then there's the cost of reconstruction, which we pay for. However, that is also covered by insurance.
Right.
So, if we have to, we've basically covered. So, what I'm asking is that we authorize the payment to NIPA of the $6,900 for the contract, and forego putting aside any additional money for the nonroutine maintenance, because to date, our costs have been zero. And if we need some money, we can always take it out of contingency, and it's not that much money. No reason, so far, our costs have been zero.
Well, and it sounds like if somebody, you know, hits a pole, then that would, our insurance would handle that.
Correct.
Rick, for safe routes, if we have to move any streetlights, is part of that budget?
Yes, yes, that is, that is budgeted for that, that's correct.
Is that part of the $2 million budget?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Moving the utilities?
Yeah, that was anticipated in that.
Right, because we, I'm sure we will be.
Right, right. But this is like, if we wanted to move a streetlight somewhere in the central business district, that's the kind of thing.
Yeah, that would be something that we would capture as part of like a plan around sidewalks in the central business district or something.
Right, but that would be it. So, basically, so that's what this, that's what this document is for. And so far, and the other nifty thing is that the system is set up such that there are nodes everywhere that are monitored, we actually have a dashboard, you can see which lights are working and how bright they are, and there's a central monitor for it. So, when a light, when a pole goes down, it throws a fault, it actually goes to a central location.
And they just come up?
And they come up, yeah.
But that is even having called them?
Excuse me?
But that is having called them?
But that is having to call them. It's all run manually.
Bananas?
And we have the sensors.
We have sensors, right.
Is it, is it working? Have they done this?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Although, we have also called them.
We've called them for certain things, but yeah, but, and, and because these things are considered motorist aids, the response times can be a week or two, they're not, you know, or three, they're not, unless there's.
They're not emergencies.
It's non-emergencies, it can take a while to get some.
But generally, it's working.
It's working, just, working just fine.
You can all sign in and look at them if you want. But Rick, you only ask for year one, this is a two-year contract.
Okay, well, do you want me to do it?
Well, that's what I'm asking, this is a two-year, this is a two-year contract that gave us.
Do you want me to, I can do, I just wasn't sure the protocol, if I can do it for one and two?
I think we need to determine that.
Okay.
Can you pick one? Can you just do it for one year?
Well, I was asking, I guess we're signing, I should say, we're signing the contract for two. Service year two is $7,107.
I mean, we're not gonna budget for that until next year.
I know, but when we sign, we're signing determination data service hereby amended to replace the word March 2025, as amended with the date two years from this date.
Right, so we're approving a two-year contract.
We are approving the two-year contract.
We're approving it, right.
So, it's 7,100, not 6,900?
No, it's 6,900.
First year.
And then 7,107.
So, is this 6,900, is that starting on June 1 of 2025, or is that starting on January 1 of 2025?
It starts in March, I think, because that's what they want us to sign it, even after to sign it now.
March 1st.
Yes.
So, that $6,900 is part of this year's budget, like current fiscal, fiscal '25 budget? Or do they not bill us until after May?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I'm not sure, and it was a little bit complicated, because they, the first year, they didn't bill us for a year.
What year are we on now, like, 30?
Yeah, they were near 30. So, I'm not sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this contract with the stipulation that we're not gonna pay a $6,900 bill until fiscal 2026, because we don't have.
25, 26.
25.
Or fiscal year 27.
25, 26.
We are fiscal 25, 26.
So, fiscal '26 is the year that goes from June 1, 2025, until May 31, 2026?
26, 27, yes.
No.
Fiscal year 25, 26, just say it that way.
Just say 25, 26.
25, 26.
Right, and knowing how their invoice system works, we won't see it for another six months anyway.
The point of this story is that we, we don't have this budgeted in current year.
Not, not in this current year.
Right, so like, are we approving this contract with a current year budget amendment? I am saying no, mostly because we don't have our treasure here. We can also wait to approve this contract until April 8, once we know the answer to this one.
I mean, they want us to sign it today.
Yeah, I think, and we should, we're not covered.
Because it's already been, it's already been three weeks.
Right, cool. Then I make a motion to approve this contract, this two-year contract, with the stipulation that the first year $6,900 payment won't happen until after June 1 of 2025.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Seconded.
Thank you, Rick.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next. All right. Very recently, well, let me back up. Three years ago, Dutchess County started a school bus stop arm enforcement program in, for all of Dutchess County, and this is the cameras on the bus. These are cameras inside the bus, outside the bus, you know, all sorts, there's like six cameras on every bus, and if you're passing a bus and you pass it illegally, the cameras capture you, it goes to the bus enforcement.
An enormous hook pops out from the bus, and you get Shanghai.
Yes, and they flatten your tires until you pay the $250 for being on pass go.
Right.
All right. Rhinebeck Central School District was the only one left in Dutchess County.
Who?
Had not signed on to the bus patrol program.
Oh, okay.
Right? And they've been, because they've been working on it, not that they were ignoring it, it's just that they have been, they've been working through what they wanted to do, and the definition of the problem, and et cetera, et cetera. Long story short, they signed the contract in October of this year to implement cameras on their buses. What that means to us is that.
School taxes go up?
Yeah, no.
We have had to make.
The funding, the funding for the program is covered, we don't pay for this.
Thank God.
Funding for the program is coming out of their, the bus program and whatever. We, as the Village of Rhinebeck, receive a 10% revenue share right for violations occurring within our jurisdiction.
Cool.
So, $250 fine, we get, if it's adjudicated, we get 25 bucks. That's what it means.
Oh, so the, so who, who gets the rest of it?
They do, the bus patrol program.
Oh.
No, the county, I think, gets some of it as well.
Oh, okay.
But all's I know is we get 10%.
So, it's not like a moving violation here in the Village of Rhinebeck, it's like a special moving violation?
It's prosecuted and done by the Dutchess County School Bus Safety Program.
But the folks would be coming here to our court to.
And it's not our law.
There is no such adjudicatory authority.
The county, there is.
Okay, sure, so they go to county court, probably.
The county is responsible for administering, you know, receiving the bus patrol's performance and stop arm programs.
So, they go to county court?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, and then we get 10%?
And we get 10%.
Fantastic.
Right, so.
Not unless you get stopped. Unless you're first.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion to approve our participation in the Dutchess County School Bus Safety Program with the Rhinebeck Central School District.
Section.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's a great idea.
Award tree planting bid.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. We can have a discussion.
Wow, wow.
You ready? I'd like to make a motion to award a tree planting bid to Cotter Landscape Management in amount of $11,691.37. Second and then discussion.
Second.
Okay, so just, so you know, this is actually money that's going to be, is from the Frost Foundation. The Frost Foundation has been generous enough to grant the tree commission a fair amount of money for which to do major plantings around the village.
Yeah, the bald and burlap trees, right?
These are the bald and burlap trees, that's correct. And I'm also just going to point out that we did receive four bids, and it led to a fair amount of discussion between Meg and I.
Yeah, because two of them are significant.
They get too much of that.
Well, yeah, and the problem was lowest responsible bidder. One of these, one of these firms has been in business apparently for just a couple of months. And the other one is coming from Smithtown, Long Island. And they didn't provide us any information other than a bottom line number. And so we both were feeling very uncomfortable that they did break out what they were spending money on, and frankly, their numbers seem unrealistic. And we've run in, we've run in, we've run into this before, remember the sidewalk a long time ago? We had a sidewalk bidder come down to construct a sidewalk from.
Buffalo.
Buffalo, right, and.
This change order or that change order?
And they did a bad job, and then when they needed to come back and fix it, they were far away. So after looking at all that, there was one other high bid, but the two low bids, we were very concerned about. It just didn't seem all that realistic to be.
And don't we have to use prevailing wage?
That's all, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so did those two?
They didn't break it.
They didn't provide any kind of.
They didn't break it out at all.
Who's getting the permits?
They are getting the permit, Cotter Landscape Management.
Okay, because I knew, that was a question.
Yes, and, and.
That was my question, a question that came up.
Yeah, coordinate the, the permit required.
And that is, that is part of, that's part of the package specifically.
You want them to be able to be.
Right, because they are ultimately the people who call DigSafe as well.
Right.
So, yes. So that's the.
How many trees?
Uh, I gotta count.
Nine, I think.
Nine, I think, yeah.
One, two, three.
That's a good line.
Six, seven, eight.
Nine, because there's two of one.
So this is both in, along Route 9 and up in Legion Park by Crystal Lake.
One is going into Legion Park, right?
Three.
Well, right, three, and then they're voluntarily planting one more in the, with the regular planting.
Oh, these are nice trees.
Yeah, and these are the ideas that what the Frost Foundation has been very good about is these are trees that normally the tree commission couldn't afford. Because we, we, they prioritize smaller, younger trees that can be easily transplanted by volunteers. These are bigger, heavier trees that come with root balls and require digging and a lot more. So that's why this is, and that's a thank you to the Frost Foundation.
And these are all in the right way, not in the brow?
Correct, correct. We did also, by the way, we did go through with New York, with our local DOT, local New York region DOT guy, to preclear the trees and the locations. So we actually sent them a list and a memo, and there was actually a change or two. So we know that this is good going forward. So we haven't, we didn't do the formal paperwork, but we sent them a sketch and a plan, talked it over, and they lost it.
Our friends at the PCE office of the New York State.
Correct, correct, correct. So that's where we stand.
I'll CC you on the award letter, and we just have to wait until we get his contract back.
Okay. Very good.
Did you make a motion?
I did, I seconded it.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Case the discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next, I want to put forward a resolution for appointing our wastewater operator. Whereas the village of Rhinebeck wastewater operator, trainee Andrew McDermott, has completed certification as a class two operator, and where he has demonstrated that he has the knowledge of our water treatment plant, and now therefore be resolved, Andrew McDermott has wastewater treatment plant operator for the village of, for the Rhinebeck wastewater treatment plant. Be further resolved that effective at the beginning of the current pay period and his hourly rate be increased from $23 an hour to $25 an hour.
Second.
All right, so let me do some clarification. This is two things in one. One, we're changing his civil service title from trainee, right, to a, to an operator. And two, we're increasing his salary from 23 to $25 an hour. So just make sure it's clear, there's two motions, there's two things in here.
So this, we were talking about as part of the budget process, giving everybody their annual cost of living kind of increases, performance increases, et cetera, kind of increases. Obviously, this $2 increase is based on having a jump in.
Knowledge.
Knowledge.
Sort of knowledge.
Promotion.
Sort of.
I mean, this is, this is a promotion, basically. Although he's not the op.
He's not the chief operator.
He's not the chief operator, right. So when it comes to sort of June raises.
We'll, we'll consider all of that going into.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Okay.
Because he now has the book knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I totally appreciate giving.
Getting the certification is a big deal because it is a very, very hard test to take.
Yeah.
And so he's demonstrated that he has the knowledge and the capacity to know what needs to be done. But it doesn't replace the actual field experience that you really need to become an operator.
Right.
Right, and the length of time it takes to be able, be able to do that.
Yeah, to be able to actually run the plant.
To have two people on that track.
Yes, and we don't want to.
Really, really, really good, right?
Yeah, we went from zero to two, this is amazing.
Right. And we want to reward people who are working hard to increase their knowledge in their.
We want to keep them here.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is great.
All right. Lions Egg Club, Lions Club Easter Egg Hunt. I mean, this does happen annually at Rockefeller Park, just to remind everybody, it's a kind of a, license is coming up for me.
I think it was moved to Rockefeller because it flooded at Mini Park last time, right?
Was it at the Mini Park last time?
The, the Mini Park, and then it was too wet.
Yeah, and so it moved to Rockefeller.
Moved to Rockefeller, right.
So probably wise to just.
This is, is the same thing this year.
Yeah, right.
Right, unless we get to be able to grant the money and fix. Right, it came up. It's just slow. I'll keep it anyways. All right, so it's a Rhinebeck Lions Club by Frank Inarvela. Children will search the park for hidden eggs, possibly a bunny sighting, and photo ops. Date is 4/12/2025 with the rain date of 4/19. Set up time at 8:00, event time starts at 10:00, ends at 11:00, and then they're out of there in five minutes. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Lions Easter Egg Hunt at Rockefeller Park.
Second.
Are you comfortable that they have not identified a sensory safe space?
Yes, because.
It's outdoors and, right, okay.
Yes, and for, sensory safe spaces are for crowds, but also for noise.
Got it.
Right, and this doesn't exhibit what the other key factor, which is noise.
Got it.
Right? Which is spelled out in what our farmers.
Yep.
All right, the next one.
We should vote.
We need to vote.
Oh, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next special request is the Distinguished Gentleman's Ride. And so this again is a yearly event here in the Rhinebeck area. It's a low-speed 40-mile motorcycle ride for classic vintage custom motorcycles, not sports or large Harley-type cruisers. Riders wear smart clothing, raise awareness for men's, you know, for men's health initiatives and raise funds for the Movember Foundation. I don't know what else to say. They meet at the fairgrounds at the corner of Mulberry Street, which is Fairgrounds property. There is quite a few of them, depending on weather, could be up to, you know, 150. I don't know if I've ever seen that many, but it's a pretty good crowd.
So he's done so well and has no issues.
Yeah, we, that's what we were going to say. We provide the ability for them to exit that area safely, because they all leave at one time and go out and, and do their thing. So Pete has signed off on agreeing to do that. So I make a motion to approve the Distinguished Gentleman's Ride.
Second.
Discussion.
This has gone off very smoothly in the past.
It's noisy, just, the only complaints we have gotten is.
Are 150 motorcycles driving down the street.
Right, but they're not short.
That's cool.
Coming from a motorcycle rider. You bet.
You know that Harley makes electric ones now, and it freaks out motorcycle drivers? My motorcycle, because, yeah.
Ooh.
Yeah, because there's no noise.
And they patented that sound, too.
I know.
But anyways, all right, move. Any, any other discussion on the gentleman's ride? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lydia?
Yes.
Planning board and ZBA.
So as, as you all know, we have five members on each of our planning boards and our zoning boards. And so once a year, one of them is up for appointment or reappointment. Tim Decker's term completes on March 31st. He is the chair of our ZBA. He has applied to stay in that role. Gary and I discussed, and we would like to recommend to you that Tim Decker remain in that role for the ZBA for the term that ends March 31st, 2030.
Right, four years.
Coming soon.
So I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Pissed out of curiosity, or, yeah, just out of curiosity, are other people applying?
No one applied, no second person applied to that one. We have, on the ZBA, we have two, one?
Two.
Two alternates. And I let them know, and they were like, no, we're going to be in alternates, so. The ZBA hasn't been meeting a lot, probably around three times a year.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
The second one, Jeff Christensen's term, the, on the planning board, ends March 31st. He declined to re-up, and we received a application from an existing alternate, Josh Stager, who, he's been an alternate for a few years now.
Yes.
And he's been actually very helpful, sort of behind the scenes in a lot of ways. He's a construction person and an engineer by trade. He's sort of got a very impressive kind of real estate construction background. And he's been showing up to meetings, which, you know, is great. We always like it when alternates show up to meetings. And so he did apply, and so Gary and I are recommending, we've spoken to him, we're recommending that he be appointed for the term that ends March 31st, 2030.
Second.
Same question. Anybody else apply? So we need to start recruiting, I guess, huh?
Well, I, I did like a big sort of recruit for alternates. And we now have two alternates on the planning board, if Josh is elevated. And, you know, one of them said, you know, I'm happy to come on board if you need me to come on board, but if someone else is interested, then I'm also happy to stay an alternate. And the other gentleman, he's great, Jim Davidson, he's been sort of part of the planning board family for a very long time.
Forever.
Yeah, he's, he's deeply uninterested in becoming a, again, a full-time member, but he's happy to pinch it if needed. So yeah, given that we now have just lost an alternate, probably putting out a, a search for new alternates, I think would be a good idea, because it's a nice way to feed into the system.
Which both those positions were properly noticed and.
No, no, I understand, I'm just, you know, it's just concerning when you.
Yeah.
It's not like we're not trying to recruit.
No, I'm not saying you're not trying to.
We have, like, we have the, the, the position of alternate, we agreed at some point to just have constantly open, so if anybody wants to apply to Martina, they're more than welcome to do so, and we're always happy to talk to them.
And I'll put out a reminder for the alternates.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So, but it's great, I mean, Josh is actually, he's, his wife is pregnant with their first child, and so he's also younger, which, you know, is, I think, great for a board such as the planning board. Help create some.
He'd be out of house for hours at a time at night.
I know, well, there is that.
He doesn't know what he's signing up for.
Yeah, his wife might be furious about this, but, you know.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're on to. We have a lot of appoint, of seminar requests. So first one, I'm just going to go through them in order I have them here. First one is for Brian Alex to attend a New York Water, New York Rural Water Association Technical Training Workshop, May 19th to May 23rd. It is being held at the Turning Stone Resort. The registration fee is $385. Lodging is $480 for there. He gets credit for doing this. Gets lots of credits, water credits, wastewater credits, but also training and updates on regulation. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Brian Alex to attend a New York Rural Water Association Technical Training Workshop.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, for Kyle Amy, our Superintendent of Public Works, to attend a New York Rural Water Association Technical Training Workshop. Same dates, same place, same cost, right? Although he doesn't get the credits, he gets the knowledge that comes along with it by being able to go there. So it doesn't go towards his licensing for operating a water plant, you know what I mean? Brian goes credit.
It's like, it's like CLE.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Right, but it's good for Kyle, you know, because we definitely need somebody as our Superintendent of Public Works to be as knowledgeable as possible to learn from the new regulations. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Kyle Amy to attend the New York Rural Water Association Technical Training.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is for Michael to attend the Climate Smart Rhinebeck Task Force as a volunteer. Michael Forenza.
This is, yeah, to attend...
The 30th Annual Hudson Valley Climate Solutions Summit.
Yep.
On 3/28/25, so that's, like, coming up. It's in SUNY, costs $25 and mileage, round trip. I'd like to make a motion for Michael to attend the Climate Smart Task Force.
Second.
To the Climate Solutions Summit.
Yeah, whatever it's called.
Hudson Valley Climate Solutions Summit.
Print's so small, I can hardly read it.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't know why.
I need magnifying glasses with my glasses. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one is for both Brian Knapp and Jeff Mulligan to attend a conference, a law conference, being held this weekend, March 27th to the 30th, at Turning Stone. This is a law conference for fire, and it's updating on laws, there's a lot of morale boosting. It's a three-day conference at the place. Typically, we get one per person, Brian filled this out for both of them. He has a seminar conference fee of $350, it's actually $375 times two, so it's, whatever that is, $750. And lodging, he didn't put a price, but I did call, because it is this weekend, and the place is booked. So I'm hearing through the grapevine that they had already pre-booked their lodging, right, and had pre-booked it. What else can I say? I have no idea where they're pre-booked for, but they are pre-booked, from what I hear. So...
So they would be reimbursed if they filled out the form?
If we approve it, they get reimbursed, yes. Right, yeah. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, for Brian and Jeff to attend the Fire Law Conference at Turning Stone this coming weekend, March 27th to the 30th.
Second. Does the fire department have its own training line item?
Um...
Does this come out of that?
Remind me when we go there, when we get there, the budget, but...
I feel like it does.
I think we do.
Does this come out of that, or does this come out of, like, employee training?
No, we'll take it out of that if it's there.
Right.
Because that's what we do for, we take it out of, we have training line items for everybody else, I'm not sure why we don't, I just don't have it committed to memory.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. My only, and I'm gonna talk to Brian about this, my concern is, A, this is two days before, three days before the conference.
B, it's inaccurate.
B, it's not filled out completely. C, you know, all of the above.
Yeah.
Right?
That is true.
But there is, I did go out and I looked at the agenda, there is a lot about building camaraderie within a fire department, and I give our fire department kudos for really doing this. We have a large fire department. We have 90-plus members with 50 active members that are...
They're doing something, right?
Yeah, think about it. Think about keeping all of those people energized, focused, trained, getting their certifications. It's not, you just don't sign up and want to be a fireman, and you go running into a burning building.
Right.
Right? There's a lot of work and a lot of training involved to be able to maintain that. So if this in any way benefits be able to help improve that, we're getting our money's worth out of it, that's my take.
Totally. No, I totally agree, it's just we need to make sure that they actually fill out the paperwork properly.
It would be helpful to check, too, if their pre-booking, how much that costs.
Oh, maybe we can put a limit on this?
Then not succeed?
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
It's the same location as where Kyle and Brian are going, so presumably it's the same price.
Well, presumably, well, I called, and to get a room right now for three days, it's...
That's dynamic. It's probably a price for the attendees, right?
I think this sort of speaks a little bit to the, we need to make sure that some of these requests are actually, like, being pegged to specific line items and that the money is properly there, but, you know.
Yeah, so the lodging, when I called, it was $436, not including taxes and fees. So...
A night?
No, total.
Oh, all right.
Assuming at $480, what the other people, what Brian, it's gonna be very...
Are they splitting?
So it's $480 times two.
960.
Let's take a split of room.
960.
Like I said, I think they pre-booked.
Right.
So that's what we're having the conference about. You don't pre-book, you get them in advance, and we approve. Right. Because if we didn't have the money, we'd say no.
Right.
It's all ours to do it. Right, all right, did I have a second on that? I think I did.
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sandra Day O'Connor.
All right, yeah, I thought it was for this one.
I don't know that answer.
All right, so, all right.
Concurring, but concurring, like, it is a positive vote, but it is a concurring opinion.
As a side member on this conference, we typically do not approve village vehicles to leave the jurisdiction of the village.
No.
Neither one of these have asked for that, right? And I want to make a motion that we do not approve the use of village vehicles to attend either one of these conferences.
Absolutely not.
That, you know, we will reimburse them for mileage for that.
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, who did I do that? Okay. All right, what do we have left?
Just a quick one, Gary, just...
Do I have yours?
Gary, can I just ask a quick, is there anything in what we bought that would allow this to be done online, where there would be, you know, people could...
Neither, neither one of these had an online portion, they're only on site. Be kind of cool if they did, but neither one did.
Because then you could have the rules there, and the people could see that, you know.
Do you mean, like, our process, or...
Whatever, if there's, whatever we bought, if there's something that we could maybe...
So typically, and I sent this out to all the department heads as well as the board, our new policy going forward, which I'm going to be sitting with Lydia and Rick for all of our policies, but the email I sent basically is that we have certain forms for reimbursement, but the idea is that prior to your event, you fill out the conference seminar, and you make every effort to sit with me and pre-book everything that you can, whether that's by voucher or by card. I'll get that set up on my end, so that people, so that we're not reimbursing individuals directly.
No, no, I get that, I just was wondering if there were a program where, like, at school, you know, if you wanted to attend a conference, you've got on the computer and...
Well, we have all paper forms, so these forms are available online, I've put them on everyone's...
No, I was just wondering, it was an online system, and then it went to whomever would approve it.
We don't really have an online system.
We gotta bring, we all have to come here.
Yeah, that's fine, I just thought maybe one of the programs that we bought...
It would be great if we had, like, a software, that would probably be done through an updated, like, treasurer's package, like, a financial management software, that wouldn't be done through any of the softwares that we've bought thus far, but yes, that would be wonderful.
All right, we're coming down to that time. So Vanessa, you're up.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion that the board officially approve the Organics and Management Plan.
Second.
Discussion. So, this, as you probably saw, is kind of a record of all the things we have done, mostly. There's some suggestions for where we could continue to evolve and improve, but for the most part, this Organics Management Plan is, is, you know, history of the many things the village has done. I put this together for the record, then also, this is one of the items I could submit to the Climate Smart Program for points. Any feedback? I'm totally happy to make edits or...
I just want to make sure we don't have to, we're not committing ourselves to do a lot more work.
No worries.
It's really to what we've already had.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
I'd like to raise, sorry, did we need to vote on that?
We're in vote hour.
Yes, I have a second.
We had discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 You have something else to add?
It's great, it's not on our agenda, I'd like to just raise something briefly. Can we, are we willing to raise something briefly?
Aye.
Sure.
The town, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, passed a resolution requesting the state legislature to give them the opportunity to impose a 3% occupancy tax on hotels and short-term rentals. They did this without any discussion with us, the village, or with the business community, or with any homeowners who have short-term rentals, or really anyone at all. And I think before Senator Hinchey and Assemblyperson Stresta had the opportunity to take a look at this, we need to figure out what our opinion of this is, and potentially send our legislative representatives a different motion, or one that supports it, or whatever. But it's not clear from anything that has been said by the town what this additional money would be used for. It is very clear that the town is trying to take advantage of the fact that the village has a thriving tourism industry, and to make some money off of it, which I find frustrating, given that Elizabeth said during the state of Rhinebeck two months ago that the town of Rhinebeck is quote-unquote "rich," and so therefore I don't know why she wants to raise taxes on, on an industry that will end up impacting our local businesses. So I don't know how we want to approach this. I understand that Gary's had a few conversations with Elizabeth about it, from what I understand, she is not planning on spending the money on anything having to do with village infrastructure, which would be inappropriate use for money like that. It just seems like she just wants this, this is just another revenue source for her. So I don't know how we want to approach this conversation, but I feel like we need to have a conversation about this.
So when the time is right, I think we should have Elizabeth come and tell us what your plans are.
Right, but what I'm saying is that this resolution has already gone to Hinchey and Stresta, and so if we want to do something about this before Hinchey and Stresta act on it, we need to do this timely.
I don't, has it gone?
Yes.
Okay, I know it has passed, I didn't know it was...
Yeah, as part of the resolution, it's, send it off to this list of people. So I would like to have a conversation about that today, ideally, and then if we're gonna pass a resolution, we do that in early April. Because, you know, we can have a conversation about a resolution, you know, over email or whatever, but I just think it's important for us to sort of figure out how we want to approach this as a, as a group who is elected to represent, basically, the central business district of the town of Rhinebeck that Elizabeth now wants to tax.
Well, first of all, we represent the whole village, not just...
Well, I know, but like, the village is the central business district for the town, that's sort of what I was, that's what I meant, it's like...
Clear, the village is within a town, so it's legal for them to pass this to cover...
I'm not saying it wasn't illegal, I'm just saying it was...
I'm just making clarity.
No, I understand all that, I mean, I would like to have the conversation with her, actually, here, I think that would be helpful.
She doesn't seem willing to have it in open session.
She says she's not ready to do that yet, so...
Well, she's already passed the resolution, so we need to...
No, I understand that, but I'm, don't shoot the messenger.
Okay. So she's not willing to come to...
I am willing to continue to pursue this to...
To try and get her to show up?
Have some level of understanding, because obviously, there's a reason for wanting to do this, besides just raising taxes and collecting money, right? There's a reason, and I want to understand exactly what the reason is, be able to say, are we on board with this or not?
Well, I mean, according to Dutchess County Tourism, the only reason to do this is if we wanted to kill tourism in Rhinebeck, so...
And that's tourism, that's tourism.
I know, I know, that's tourism's viewpoint. By doing this, if this actually goes through, our occupancy tax rate will be higher than New York City's.
Correct, right.
You know, we are not just taxing people who stay at Nervo, we're taxing people who stay at $80 Airbnbs, and we're not actually taxing those people, we're taxing the people who are providing the $80 Airbnbs, and so we're actually, this is an added tax on our population, people who live here.
The person, the taxes added on to the bill, not...
Not really. How it sort of works with Airbnbs, it ends up being paid, like, the person who makes the Airbnb reservation doesn't, it's...
It's a lump sum.
It's a lump sum, and then the person who's...
The person who...
They'll raise their price.
They just raise the price.
They'll just raise the price, right, so like, you know...
It's not going to, yeah, it's not like they necessarily have to lose.
Right, there's, you know, our local businesses have lost their minds over this, to put it politely. I'm deeply concerned about the fact that as everything becomes more expensive in Rhinebeck, we are going to start losing our eclectic mix of businesses that are all locally owned, and we're gonna end up with more Jay McLaughlins. And so anything that sort of adds to that chaos, I think, is actually damaging to sort of the village and what it, what is, what it has expressed itself to want to be, as we've captured the cop plan, and as has been expressed to us by our local business owners.
But not by, not necessarily by the community, because if you look at the survey questions, tourism is not necessarily their top priority.
Well, tourism isn't the top priority, but people do love our eclectic mix of businesses, and as we know, those eclectic mix of businesses are not able to be supported by the people, 100% by the people who live here.
Right, it is an economic engine for us.
Yeah, the only reason that all of these businesses survive is because of the people who come to Rhinebeck to shop, and to eat, and to stay.
We do, we do not want an empty street of businesses down here.
I'm just, I don't know, I personally think that, I would like to, you know, have this conversation when we can focus on it, because we still have a lot of stuff to do.
And I agree, and I really, and thank you for bringing that up, I think it's good. And we should continue to get the facts, and I think we need the facts, and I will continue to do that.
Okay, I'm totally fine with that, as long as this conversation...
Doesn't matter.
...happens expeditiously, because if we are going to state an opinion about this, we need to state an opinion about this quickly. And given the fact that the town gave us absolutely no warning that they are doing this, we are now all playing catch-up.
I'd like to find out when it's actually going forward to the state, I know if it's sent there, I want to find out what their agenda...
We need to talk to our representative.
I mean, we can talk to Hinchey and Stresta about this, yeah.
I think we should, I think we should have that conversation as well, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.